Not too bad.
Yeah, are they still, are you gonna put it on YouTube tonight?
Yeah.
Couple of them ended. Like, I really wanna be there, but I can't.
Yeah.
Stick to the streets. Yeah, we're still in trouble. The school's been, not even bad, we're still. Give me more days, we're done. I'm so tired. Hey! Yeah, how are you?
Not too bad, not too bad. Man, I don't forget, everyone wanted to push one's hair.
Right? Hey, how soon do you want?
Yeah, I would just say.
I put it on August two to join.
I know, right?
You're finally back. Have a long day. I can imagine, that's fine. Now I get it, what's in my pockets, I don't know. I know. I have, I was talking about.
There's some things I just need to say. I just, I don't understand.
There isn't. Yeah, I thought you were.
Totally, yeah, totally.
I'm throwing through.
Now, does it happen? It has, it has something. Yeah. It's bizarre. It's better than Zola, it's better than Zola, you know that?
Yeah.
Sid? Oh, I like that, Sid. Actually, with the hospital. Like, sorry. Yeah, it was a joy.
Today, I'm on the menu. I turned the volume all the way up, but it was still making.
I'd like to just take a step system. And when finally it hurts going off. It should be, yes. Well, yesterday. I think we're struggling, like, if one that. Yeah. He might.
Okay, Fredericksburg, that's so beautiful. It is a good place. Mom and I. I love it, I wanna go for a longer time.
Some of them are, hi, you're single boy, Claire. Lot of driving.
No. It should be. It is, oh, would you tell me, so happy birthday. No, we're just doing that one present.
And they're like, you're a threat, you won't be doing the. Yeah. All right, at six thirty, we're gonna go and kinda get the meeting started, and we will start tonight with the class relations.
I'd like to be just like, of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
We have no meeting of the press tonight, so this is our public hearing introductions, we're gonna go ahead and, every, who has these plans and assignments today, Mr. Varnick.
Um, I think, there's this.
Sorry, actually.
That's, no, it's all right.
All right. So, the next item on the agenda, for the board, please hold on here, on the next proposed capital project, if you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed a sign in sheet, which should include your name and address. After presentation by the administration and invited to be an opportunity for publishing comments on the project, at the hearing, we will ask that each person in their comments give three minutes on the topic of the limited proposed project from under consideration. The notice, this project hearing is published as may be required, and at this time, I will ask our superintendent, Senator Varnick, explaining for the second.
Pursuant to Indiana Code twenty twenty-six seven thirty-seven, before a school corporation may spend more than one million dollars to build, repair, or alter a school building that will be financed by a lease or bonds, it must hold a public hearing at which exhumations of the potential value of the project to the school corporation and community are given. This public hearing and the consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. These resolutions establish the maximum financial terms for the proposed project.
Mr. Varnick, will you tell us how the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and any important projects?
These are for capital improvements in our facilities pursuant to our district building feasibility study provided by Whiteman Corporation.
Mr. Varnick, will you also tell us how the proposed project meets the school district's needs?
These are for updates and upgrades on all of our buildings as established and itemized in our feasibility study.
We will now hear from Lynn Mininger, our business manager, about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as the information about the effect on the typical property tax year.
Good evening. As we discussed with the school board when implementing the Whitco five-year strategic plan last year, priority number four of that plan was to update, maintain, building and grounds to provide a safe and well-maintained teaching and learning environment. With that priority in mind, we matched our improvement needs with the two thousand twenty-two Whitco feasibility study that Mr. Varnick talked about with Whiteman Corporation. The feasibility study is detailed by four different levels of improvements based on urgency over the next twenty years. With the two thousand twenty-four lease rental financing, Whitco will be able to address all the level-one needs of the twenty-year identified feasibility study. Additionally, level-two needs to the year two thousand thirty will be addressed with this financing. The two thousand twenty-four lease rental is proposed to be a six-point-five million dollar issuance to include both hard and soft costs, with a payback not to exceed more than twenty years. Financing with the two thousand twenty-four lease rental and including all other debt financing payback calculations, Whitco's overall tax rate is projected to not exceed the two thousand twenty-two tax rate of a dollar six. Whitco's overall tax rate in two thousand twenty-three and moving forward is projected to remain at an overall tax rate of a dollar five or less based on assessed values.
Thank you, Lynn. We will now open the public hearing, remember, if you would like to speak, please sign in on the sheet located at the picture console. As I mentioned earlier, we asked that you state your name after us limits your help to the proposed project and financing, keep any comments to three minutes and avoid being repetitive if possible. Do you have no signatures, Rhys, though?
No.
Does anyone want to sign on and speak? Thank you to all who have participated in this hearing, we appreciate your time and interest in the project and the future of our community. Please note that this is just the first step in the legal process, the board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. We have the consideration of bond-related resolutions, Mr. Varnick, could you please summarize the project resolution?
Project resolution is required when the school is planning to spend more than one million dollars at a given facility. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the cost of issuance and establishes the total project costs. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the project resolution.
I make motion that we accept the project resolution.
I second it.
So probably do consecutive that we adopt the project resolution, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Varnick, could you please summarize the reimbursement resolution?
The next resolution is a reimbursement resolution relating to the financing of the construction project. This resolution permits the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which it might spend on the project prior to the closing on the bonds. It is required by federal tax law in order to preserve the school corporation's ability to reimburse itself.
Can I have a motion and a second to adopt the reimbursement resolution?
I move, will you adopt the reimbursement resolution?
So probably move consecutive, that we adopt the reimbursement resolution, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
So probably move consecutive, that we adjourn the this portion of the meeting, which is the project hearing, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, and raise your right hand.
Aye.
As opposed, motion passes, the project hearing is adjourned. We're gonna move on into our regular meeting, we're going to start with our opening remarks, which is two point one, our special presentation of the strategic planning committee co-chairs.
If the board will recall, in our strategic plan, just while they're getting set up and ready, we had our strategic committees for the different various variations of our goals and things that would be in our strategic plan. So, what we've done is, we've all, they have met, they've worked, they've consolidated all these into one living, working document, which we'll show you in here in just a minute. And, and this has been shared with Dr. Bolch from Indiana State. The work that this, that these committees have done, I just can't say enough about how hard they worked, and the, and the quality of work that they have accomplished here, and this document that they've created has set us so far ahead in our strategic plan board that Dr. Bolch is allowing us to use this year as year one of our five-year plan, which is just incredible. And also, and I'll let you, let you guys go here in a minute, also, he has taken their format, stolen it, and he's using it at his presentations now, he's so impressed with it. So, these guys have done just a tremendous job, so thank you so much for your hard work and your quality of work, and this is what's going to help continue the movement go forward, it's all yours.
As, as we wait on the presentation to come up, you'll notice that we included the vision, mission, and values on each page as a reminder of what we're doing that connects with what you guys did as a board, and you'll see those connectors as we progress through this.
Our first goal statement is highest student achievement, and we are integrating innovative, rigorous, and consistent curriculum to develop academic pathways for all students. So, something that we've really focused on is creating unique learning opportunities for all students, whether virtual, in-person, and/or homeschooled. And something else that we've already accomplished is deciding on a literacy curriculum, and we are in the final stages of the adoption phase. Next, we'll move on to building capacity, and our goal statement for this is to expand capacity of physical spaces, resources, and support systems for student success. We have adopted branching mines district-wide for our MTSS, and all staff will be trained on eight fourteen. And we have obtained funds to expand our current spaces.
One of the things I should have mentioned before we continue, if you go to the market, marketing and branding, the goal statement, you'll see in parentheses of P three comma four, that means it connects to the other priority statements as well. So, when you see those, there's some connection to each one of those. Marketing and branding, Mr. Singray has done an incredible job so far creating a uniform logo that really emphasizes this is Whitco. If you've come in our athletic facilities lately, you'll see the Whitco Wildcat, you'll see the fonts that they, they developed, and people are going to know that that's Whitco based on that. The other thing is the creating district uniformity through new campus names, and as we navigate that, again, it shows that Whitco is, is one, just with the different campus names. The measurable success, it was a little more difficult to come up with a measurable success for this, so for this year, we measured how many times Whitco was mentioned, I went positively in the media, and it was way more than a ten percent increase from last year, so we hope to continue that. Going on to the capital feasibility, I would just like to thank Lynn, you guys went through the presentation just a little bit ago in that meeting, a lot of that is what we're trying to do here with the feasibility. So, the goal statement, follow the established Whitco Corporation feasibility plan with efficacy, we're doing that, and I think that's one of the things that you'll see in creating new spaces and getting all those needs met early, we're right on target with that. And so, we met that one hundred percent. At the bottom, the measurable success, we met that, and I think you'll see even beyond that, so that was, that was a really solid one. The equitable access, the goal statement, we'd like to ensure all students have equitable access to a variety of high-quality extracurricular and inclusive opportunities, we're really excited about this one. Kind of the two main areas that we're looking to measure is, we'd like to increase at least two extracurricular opportunities, we're looking at esports and doing a unified track team for next year. I was talking to some of our girl basketball players today, and they are ready to volunteer for it, and I think it's a long time coming, and it's only gonna be great for our kids, so we're really excited about that. And we know that students tend to get in more trouble between the hours of three and six, and we're trying to reduce that by giving them more opportunities and connecting with kids that maybe they don't connect with the established sports or activities that we have. So, our measurable success there, Mr. Benedict also pointed out that we're gonna have our student survey ready to give at the beginning of the school year, just to see what their interests are as well, so we're gonna be creating some, and then hopefully, based on that survey, adding even more opportunities for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work on this.
I, I just wanna say something before you all walk off here, again, thank you so much for all your hard work on this, but I think I, I know I speak for the board when I say, Allison, we, we didn't get, we're not doing our individual reports tonight. And this is your last, your final board meeting, 'cause you're moving, and I just wanna take the time on behalf of myself and the board and all of us at Whitco to sincerely thank you for your dedication and hard work this past year, for Whitco and all of our students and support for staff. And I know that you had a lot of time and a lot of effort that you put into this, and your ideas. your ideas on, on the marketing stuff were incorporated in here. And so I just didn't want you to walk out of here tonight unnoticed that we do recognize your hard work. We certainly appreciate you and appreciate your time spent here. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
All right, we're going to move on. Just a couple of things in headliners tonight. We want to congratulate once again the graduating class of 2023. We all, except for Scott, got a chance to, to be there that evening and present diplomas. That was kind of fun, and that was a, it was a good time. We want to also congratulate Lynn Power, who was sixth at the Girl State Track Event. And we want to wish our Whitco FFA students well at State Convention. And we just heard right before the start of the meeting that our ag sales demo has placed in the top four. We don't know for sure yet where in the top four. That's pretty awesome at State Convention, so that's, that's great news for headliners. Reports this month were from the administration. We're just read only, so we won't have any actual, anyone get up unless you really want to. Nobody's jumping up, so we're going to move on. 4.0 superintendent update.
Feed the children donated school supplies, new books, miscellaneous food items with an estimated value of $8,128. So thank you to them for those donations, and I'm going to have a little more to say at the end.
All right.
I'm done with that right now.
We have no public comments tonight, so we're going to move on to 6.0, which is business reports and consent agenda. Quite extensive list this time for consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to accept that consent agenda as listed.
I move that we accept the consent agenda items as presented.
I second it.
So properly moved and seconded, that we accept the business reports and consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. In 7.0, new business, we have the approval of the following staff and student handbooks for 2023-2024 school year. We have Whitco Elementary Student Handbook, the Non-Certified Staff Handbook, Administrator's Handbook, Transportation Handbook, Whitco Junior Senior High Student Handbook, Certified Staff Handbook, Food Service Handbook, and Substitute Handbook. Can I get a motion to approve all of those handbooks?
I move we accept the handbooks as presented.
I second it.
So properly moved and seconded, that we accept the 2023-2024 school year handbooks as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. In 7.2, we have the approval of Neola School Board Policies, Volume 35, Number Two, on first reading. There will be a second reading and final approval at the July 17th School Board Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those Neola policies, please?
I move that we accept the Neola School Board Policies.
I second it.
So properly moved and seconded, that we accept the Neola School Board Policies as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. In 7.3, we have the approval of the following food service requests as recommended by Michelle Gaski, who is our Whitco Food Service Manager. It is recommended there will be no lunch price increases for the 2023-2024 school year. It is recommended the HBS proposal award of Region Eight and extended area school child nutrition group be approved. It is recommend, recommended the Indiana Education Service Center School Food Co-op Agreement be approved for the upcoming school year. It is recommended the Region Eight Education Service Center Milk and Dairy Awards for 2023-2024 be approved. It is recommended the Indiana Education Service Center Dairy Co-op Network Agreement for 2023 and 2024 be approved. And it is recommended the Region Eight Education Service Center Bid Proposal be approved. Can I get a motion to approve all of those proposals, please?
I move that we...
Go ahead.
I move we accept the food service request.
Second.
So properly moved and seconded, that we accept the food service request as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. In 7.4, it is recommended the list of 30 voided checks totaling $6,151.92 be voided and with funds returning to the individual fund balances. Can I get a motion to return, void and return the funds from the 30 voided checks?
I move that we approve the list of 30 voided checks to be voided.
So properly moved and seconded, that we approve avoiding of 30 checks and returning those funds to our proper balances. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. In 7.5, we have the approval of the annual field trips. There are a list of those which I think we probably all read, so I just need a motion to approve the annual field trips.
I move we approve the annual field trips.
Second.
So properly moved and seconded, that we approve the annual field trips. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes as well. I have no old business at this time, so, Mr. Pavaric, could you have any miscellaneous administrative items?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. You know, the consent agenda comes and goes so swiftly, but a lot happens in that. And I don't want this night to go unnoticed, so I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to call some individuals up here, introduce them. I'd like to, when I call your name, if you would come up here, stand in front of the stage, turn and face that way, because there's a camera out there, and there's a lot of people watching us right now on YouTube Live, and I want the community to meet our new employees that are coming into Whitco next year, because this is a very powerful, highly-qualified, licensed, dedicated individuals. So first, I want to call up our new Director of Special Services, also known as our Special Education Director, Mr. Kerry Warmer. Kerry, would you come up here? You just seem to be the first one to speak and the first one up. You're all full of firsts tonight, aren't you? Stand there and face that way. Thank you. Next, our new person, would you just kind of stay up here for a minute? I want you guys to kind of line up. I want to have a line up here. If you'd all minds, thank you. Next, our new Pearson Elementary Principal, Kristy Hopper. Kristy, could you come down, please? Thank you. Next, our new high school additional, our new high school assistant principal, Caleb Thank you, Caleb. We have two new speech therapists that will be with us this year. That is huge for Whitco. Kate Sullivan is here. I don't think Emily made it here, but Kate, could you come down, please? Kate's one of our two speech therapists. This is a difficult position to find, and we find, we found two very high-quality, dedicated individuals this year. And then also, our new Director of Alternative Services, Jamie Pano. Jamie, could you come down? Jamie will be overseeing our homeschool program, Little Cats, continue to oversee Little Cats in their daycare, in our Early Learning Center, and a grant coordinator and writer for the district. And then our new ag teacher for agricultural and FFA, Ken Johns. Are there any other new staff members that came in late that, that did not get recognized? Because we have several that are within that consent agenda, were also a very highly-qualified, licensed, powerful group of new elementary teachers for both our buildings as well that will be serving with Whitco now, and we're thrilled to have them. This is a very powerful group. I wanted the community, the community to meet them and be able to put a face to a name, and just very pleased to say, board, that I'm so excited about where we're going with Whitco, with this, with this group. Thank you very much, everybody. Now, you can all go sit down.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Anything else, Mr. Pavaric?
No, I am done. Mrs. Arnold, thank you.
Mr. Pavaric, I just mentioned on Wednesday about the Indiana Philanthropy Association Northeast Indiana, all the many required foundations...
Wait, would you start over again? I, I think I cut you off. This is very important, I'm sorry.
On Wednesday, the Career Academy was asked to host the Indiana Philanthropy Association's Northeast Indiana Regional Forum. It's about 80, 80 people coming from all the major foundations that are with CTE educate, or, you know, funding CTE education, what's coming up, and what do we funding for, have hosted them here in our building. It's going to be about 80 of them. We're going to have, they'll be here from 10 to 3. We're going to have tours of the building, all those kind of things. So they're kind of, you know, Whitco, Whitco Career Academy's on the map. People are kind of seeing what's going on, so it'll be kind of neat to have those people in our building. Mr. Pavaric will serve on the, on the committee at the beginning with the advisory of speakers and myself to talk about CTE education and what's, what's coming up the pipeline and what we could possibly be funding for. So all those people will be in our buildings. We're looking forward to hosting that on Wednesday. Okay? Yep, thank you.
Okay, the last thing I have is just a sort of reminder of the next School Board Meeting is actually a work session. It is open to the public. We encourage anyone to come and sit and discuss with us. It's Wednesday, July 12th at 4:00 p.m. It's in the top room here at the Career Academy. The next School Board Meeting is Monday, July 17th at 6:30 p.m. Right here in the lecture room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
So properly moved and seconded, that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. We adjourn. Thank you all for coming.
Happy birthday to Danny Studebaker.
I'll let him know.